Today's Tuesday, August twenty six, twenty twenty five and the time is seven thirty P M. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Danielle, can we have the roll call?
Keef Offer.
Here.
Dehaven.
Here.
Spruill.
Here.
Dobree.
Here.
Randall. Lewis.
Here.
Medina.
Here. All right, note we have a quorum tonight, so then do we have approval of the agenda as presented?
Madam Mayor, I move that council approve the agenda as presented for August twenty six, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree.
Randall.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Keef Offer.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Spruill.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're moving on to number two on our agenda, the consent agenda. The listing under consent agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or a council member may request that an item may be removed from the consent agenda at the time prior to council's vote. I'll ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion after reading the items. A, approval of the minutes from the July fifteenth, twenty twenty five natural medicine special work session. B, approval of the expenditure list for August twenty six, twenty twenty five. C, approval of a special event permit for the Cortez Celtic Fair Oktoberfest to be held on September twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. And D, renewal application on a hotel and restaurant liquor license for El Campestrom Mexican Restaurant LLC located at fourteen thirty East Main Street, number six Cortez. Would anyone like to see an item removed?
I move that council approve the consent.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Lewis.
Spruill.
Yes.
Randall. Lewis.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Keef Offer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're gonna move on to number three on our agenda, public participation. The number, there's no limit to the number of speakers, although public comment will be held to an overall time limit of thirty minutes for this first session. Speakers may have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not see time to another commenter. Do we have any other, anyone from the public who'd like to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number four on our agenda, presentations. We have none tonight. So number five is public hearings. Five A is ordinance thirteen forty five, series twenty twenty five. It's a second reading of an amendment to the code of the city, uh, Cortez, Colorado, for a purpose of extending the temporary moratorium on submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of applications for licenses or permits for natural medicine.
Patrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you'll recall, back in February of this year, council adopted a six-month moratorium on the processing of uh, natural medicine applications for local licenses. And the purpose of that moratorium was so that the city could develop its own regulatory scheme. Unfortunately, we have not been able to finalize those regulations despite due diligence. And I think a, an example of the due diligence is you just approved the minutes for the natural medicine special work session on July fifteenth. And tonight, we had a regular work session discussion of the natural medicine regulations. Uh, and you've instructed staff to come forward with a, an ordinance on first reading at the next council meeting. Uh, what you have before you is an ordinance that extends the uh, moratorium for another three months in order for us to get through the process of finalizing the ordinances or the ordinance that we're working on now. Uh, staff fully expects that that will occur and that three months is no more than necessary to allow us to complete those regulations. Uh, and, uh, we are right at the six-month deadline tonight. So, um, should you choose not to approve this on second reading, then, uh, applicants are free to submit applications to the state without having to abide by any, uh, Cortez regulations other than what the, uh, local land use code might impose on businesses in general. Uh, but I would certainly recommend that, uh, you extend the moratorium and adopt this ordinance. Thank you.
And then if we, um, uh, we're adding three months and say we pass our rules within that three months or, you know, within, let's say the first. Can we end the moratorium?
The moratorium will end, uh, per its terms if we adopt the ordinance that, uh, we are currently working on.
Great.
I, I think it's important that we, um, we, um, pass this because we have, we have many, uh, projects, important projects that we're, we're dealing with and we definitely need this time extension. So I, I would encourage council to, uh, move on this.
Well, I'll open this up for a public hearing. Do we have anyone from the audience who'd like to speak on the, this topic? All right. Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion. Any other discussion or questions from council? Or do we have a motion?
I move that city council adopt on second reading ordinance number thirteen forty five, series twenty twenty five, an ordinance approving a three-month extension to the current temporary six-month moratorium on the acceptance, processing, and approval of applications for licensing or permits for natural medicine healing centers, cultivation facilities, product manufacturing, testing facilities, and any other related license or permit involving natural medicine to allow the city to finalize the drafting and adoption of local regulations concerning the case.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Keef Offer.
Randall. Dobree.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Spruill.
Yes.
Keef Offer.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. All right, we're gonna move on to five B on our agenda, ordinance number thirteen thirty five. We'll consider approving the second reading, an ordinance approving the, um, assignment of Eli Tomac's land lease and hangar development agreement to Echo Tango Three LLC. Presented by Jeremy Patton, our airport director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. So yes, this is the second reading. Um, Eli came to us and requested to change his lease agreement from his name to his business. Um, so essentially, this is just a repeat of last meeting, uh, barring any public comments, um, or questions. But, uh, uh, so council's being asked to consider on second reading the ordinance to approve the assignment of the airport land lease from Eli Tomac to Echo Tango Three LLC. Um, this is ordinance number one three three five, series twenty twenty five. And, uh, yeah, barring any questions or public comment.
All right, I'll go ahead and open this up to public hearing. Anyone from the audience who'd like to speak on this topic? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion for that. Any questions?
No, no questions. I think this is, uh, pretty straightforward. So I move that council approve on second reading ordinance number thirteen thirty five, series twenty twenty five, an ordinance approving the assignment of Eli Tomac's land lease and hangar development agreement to Echo Tango Three LLC.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Spruill.
Dobree.
Aye.
Randall. Lewis.
Aye.
Spruill.
Yes.
Keef Offer.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. Thank you, Jeremy.
Yep.
All right, we're gonna move on to six on our agenda, unfinished business. We have none. Uh, so seven A, or seven is new business. Seven A is ordinance number thirteen forty four, series twenty twenty five. Um, a first reading for the assessment of an airport land lease agreement. Presented by Jeremy Patton, airport director.
Oh yeah, we are, this situation is another owner of a hangar that has sold his hangar, um, Lane Kim. He's lessy from, on the airport since two thousand eighteen. Recently sold his hangar on South Lot Eight. Um, the buyer, Robert J. Brown, will be assuming this lease agreement, uh, if approved. The original land lease again was, goes back to the twenty seventh of March, twenty eighteen. It was a forty-year land lease. Uh, the city switched from twenty-five to forty years in about twenty fifteen. Um, so he went on the forty-year. Lane Kim constructed his own hangar on that lot. This agreement did not have an ordinance attached, as we have a few others we're, we're working to remedy that with. Uh, therefore, we are ensuring this long-term lease agreement now has an approved ordinance with the new buyer. Um, there is no fiscal impact in this situation, uh, or at this time. Staff recommends that council approve on first reading ordinance one three four four, series twenty twenty five. The ordinance approving Lane Kim's forty-year land lease, uh, to Robert J. Brown and set for a public hearing and second reading on the ninth of September, twenty twenty five. Barring any questions.
Do we know the reason why, uh?
Yeah, so the property owner, yeah, Lane Kim sold his property up here. He's, he lives in Arizona and so he's just simplifying things, getting rid of some, some assets, so.
So then, uh, Robert Brown will take over the rest of the forty years.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, I move that city council approve on first reading, reading ordinance thirteen forty four, series twenty twenty five, an ordinance approving the assignment of Lane Kim's forty-year land lease agreement to Robert J. Brown and set for public hearing and second reading on the ninth of September, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by, was it Keef Offer?
Lewis.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Keef Offer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Aye.
Spruill.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. All right, seven B on our agenda, resolution number nine, series twenty twenty five. A resolution approving an ex, uh, exception to the strict application of the Cortez Land Use Code concerning the construction of a fence. Presented by, uh, Jason Armstrong, our city planner.
Evening, council, Madam Mayor. Um, this evening, uh, bringing an application before you for a fire deviation at twenty-six East Crystal Street. Uh, the applicant would like to install a six-foot fence in a portion of the front setback of the principal structure. Um, section five point oh five of the city land use code effective April eighteenth, twenty twenty five requires that all fences and walls constructed in the front setback have a maximum height of four feet. And he is looking to install a six-foot fence. Um, here's a map. Um, you can see that the house, uh, is right here next to Carpenter Recreation Area. Um, here's a, here's a picture from Google Earth that shows where the previous fence-
Here, uh, hold on, Jason. We don't see your presentation on our screens yet.
Oh, sorry about that.
Okay, if if it's not gonna work, we can move on. We've got the presentation.
Okay. Well, we can try to wing this a little bit if you guys are ready for that. So if you look at the packet before you, hopefully you guys can see see that. Yeah, so here's an area map I provided for you guys and you can see that the the house is located next to Carpenter Recreation Area, which is part of the reasoning for this application. I've included a couple of photos in your in your packet. One is showing where an old fence used to exist, which is approximately where the property owner wants to place the new one. Here is a view down Driscoll Street to the trailhead, so you can get a kind of an idea of where that trailhead is and where parking and pedestrian traffic occurs right near the house. Here is a rendering provided by the applicant and what the fence would look like once it's in place. I provide you guys with the dimensional standards and other applicable standards. So as I mentioned, the applicant is seeking the privacy that a six foot fence would provide for them. In order to grant this exception or minor deviation to allow the lynchers to proceed with home construction of the six foot fence in the front setback, the city council must determine that there are unique characteristics of this property, inconsistency with surrounding property, or other circumstances that make the strict application of the provisions of the land use code inequitable physically and practical or contrary to the public good. The applicant mentioned that they had, they experienced an address change, which changed the orientation of where they thought their front yard was at. This was a correction that needed to be made. It was something that was in error and the county corrected this and several others in early twenty twenty-five. I did submit this entire application packet to all of our referral agency partners and I did not receive any comments for or against one way or the other. The applicant is here, so feel free to read his, read the comments and then they can answer questions if you have them. So your alternatives tonight are you can approve the exception to full design standards. As submitted, you can deny the request for an exception and state your reasons. You can ask for more information and continue the application to a date certain or table the application. And then in terms of a recommendation, staff in this case are gonna remain neutral on the decision. However, I would like you to make note of the conditions as listed in the resolution and those are, number one, the unimproved portion of the front setback shall maintain all requirements of the adopted land use code regarding fences. And the second one is the approved section of fence shall meet all vision clearance standards per the land use code. And with that, I'll entertain questions or you can ask questions directly of the applicant.
Alright, do we have any questions?
I have a comment. I don't have a question. The comment that I'm making is it if it doesn't affect cars coming and going, the clearance vision is clear for traffic. That's the whole reason for having the setback of the four foot fence, only four foot tall, so you can see traffic. And this is not affecting that any way, shape, or form. So to me, just saying, hey, you can't have a six foot fence, doesn't make any sense in this instance. So I I feel it's a good reason to say that this is meets the exception rule.
I would agree with that and I often walk past this property. And over the past few months, there's been significant work in terms of improving the property itself. And to me, this is just a part of that process and exactly what you just said, Councilor Spruul, I think that, you know, if it doesn't affect traffic or any of those sorts of things, really we I don't wanna say it's none of our business, but it it's not as big of a deal, right?
I would agree with that as well and their justification that this area is used as a patio and this gives them a little more privacy fits in.
I would agree as well and and also wanted to highlight that the the facing fence across the across the street from them is six feet. And it, or at least appears to be six feet and it looks, it isn't like they are facing a a house whose other front front fence would be four feet and is facing them directly. It's their their side yard or front yard is very side yard like. So I I think that that's at least part of it. Thank you.
And then I think the other benefit is it's not going to the corner, so it's not obstructing like a stop sign or view of an intersection.
Given these conditions, I have no objections.
Do we wanna hear from the applicant? Do you wanna add anything or?
I move that council approve resolution number nine, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving the request for an exemption to the land use code, section five dot dash oh five, fences and walls.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Spruul.
Dobry.
Aye.
Keefoffer.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. Alright, we're moving on to seven C on our agenda, a possible change of a meeting date for the November eleventh, twenty twenty-five council meeting that currently falls on Veterans Day holiday. Presented by Drew Sanders, city manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as the mayor stated, the November stated meeting or the first one is scheduled for November eleventh, which is the National Veterans Day holiday. Thank you, Mayor Medina, for having pointed this out to us so that we can address it well in advance. But I am merely approaching council to find out if you are desirous of moving it from the holiday or keeping it there or changing the date. So it's up to you. If you do want to do it, we suggest that you consider Wednesday, November twelfth, so it's really close to the original date and would avoid, hopefully, as much confusion as possible for the community. And with that, I submit it to you, council, for your consideration.
Alright, yeah, I guess the the main reason I brought this up is not just for for us on council, but staff, you know, we like to have them here and they would have that day off of work, but then they would still have to come in in that evening and work.
Yeah, I think that makes sense and I'm fine with switching it to the Wednesday.
Yeah, I I I think we need to be respectful to our veterans here in in Cortez and also our staff that has that day off. I I think we need to be respectful for their time, so I would agree that we just move it to the next day.
I move that city council approve a change in workshop and regular stated day, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, to Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, in order to avoid conflicting with Veterans Day holiday.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Dobry.
Spruul.
Yes.
Keefoffer.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Dobry.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Medina.
Aye. Alright, we're gonna move on to seven D on our agenda. The hybrid council meeting slash remote appearance by council. Presented by Drew Sanders, city manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this matter has been brought before council previously, most recently was in March of this year, wherein it was discussed by council. No decisive action ta- was taken to that time other than to table the matter. The, I presented you with the minutes from that meeting that should be on your desk. However, those minutes don't reflect, I think, some of the discussion that was on there to where our our last understanding was that we were gonna save this for the charter update. However, this is an important topic for members of the council and we do wanna bring it back to you. However, this time, the the topic was not brought back to us in time for us to fully vet this and fully put it on the agenda, so we took a median approach. Wherein, I'm just coming to you tonight and trying to keep this very narrow for now because we did seem to have a bit of a divided council previously. I'm hoping to just narrowly ask council tonight, do you wanna proceed with this? And if so, that will be clear direction for me. I can have it. We will have a prepared for first, or sorry, a workshop session just to solidify the conditions in the ordinance and then we can have it for first reading next meeting as well. If there's any changes, we can do that on the fly. We've already discussed how to do that. If not, then then we're done. But right now, I just need some clear direction on where to go with that. And once, and if that occurs tonight, we can accelerate that and move that right along. So with that, council, I also wanna point out that we've given you reference material, which is the proposed ordinance. I'm putting reference material on there only because this was not part of the packet for the community to consider. Therefore, you know, it's really not proper, at least the way this agenda item was written, to discuss it tonight, but I did wanna give it to you for your consideration and preparation perhaps for next workshop meeting. Also, while we're loo- looking at that, our city clerk reminded me that this is labeled as ordinance number thirteen thirty-five. Please scratch that because that has already been used. That is that is not accurate. But other than that, it's the ordinance is, we understand it. So I will pose this or turn this over to council for discussion and possible action.
Okay, I'll start, because the reason I'm bringing this back is we learned a lot at the Colorado Mississippi League Conference this summer in June. And I just don't think it's necessary to wait for the the charter update. I think this is important. I think we're behind a lot of communities. When I went to the mayor's meeting in the mayor's mingle, I asked the room how many communities have virtual attendance or allow virtual attendance and ninety, over ninety percent of the room raised their hand. We also have local community or local organizations that allow virtual attendance, our school, RE One School District, our Empire Electric Board. So I just think we're we're behind and even what we're proposing here is way more restrictive than most communities. And I know some council members were concerned about the abuse of it. I talked to the city of Montrose and they have no restrictions on theirs at all. And a council member that they felt was abusing it didn't get reelected, so the community itself kind of addressed that issue. So I'm just, I I'm ready for this to move forward. I'm in support of this. It's it's a little more restrictive than I'd want, but I think that was a compromise to like get us to find terms that we we could all kind of wrap our heads around. It was a maximum of four meetings a calendar year that someone could be virtually and we would not have more than two council members virtually at once. I think those were the two big points. And then letting, you know, letting staff know ahead of time, two days ahead of time, that they'll need virtual attendance so that can be set up.
I'll repeat what I've said before. We don't have the power to do this. All of our power is delegated through the charter. And Article three, Article one, section three of our charter specifically says, "All powers of the council shall be exercised in the manner prescribed in this charter. If the manner is not prescribed, then such manner may be prescribed by ordinance." This, the manner of our meetings is prescribed in our charter and for us to change that, I think, requires a charter change as we've as we've discussed. We, we're already in the process of working on things to change the charter, including this, and and I think that's the only appropriate way to move forward.
I'll just continue what I've said before. I'm in support of this and I'm actually think that what you're reading from the charter is in support of doing an ordinance to address something specifically like this. I also agree with the mayor. I've spoken to and read many virtual attendance meetings, including Dolores, Empire Electric, Durango, Elamoza, Greeley, Breckenridge, Golden, Denver, Mangus, RE One Schools, and Estes Park. And I think this is really well thought out and also very restrictive compared to other places like Dolores and Mangus don't have these limitations and Mangus and Empire Electric don't actually even have rules at all. Other communities I've spoken to were the same, so.
I, I was in attendance with Mayor Medina, CML, and I knew this was a a pretty hot topic for, so I went around and and spoke with many attendees there. And the majority of those individuals allowed virtual meetings and and basically had had no restrictions. I I think we have really come up with some restrictions and and quite honestly, I I would like to even open that up a little bit more. Instead of four, only four meetings, I would say twenty-five percent, which would be six meetings. I do wanna make sure that we, if we proceed with with this, though, we are going through the proper channels. But I I am definitely in favor of virtual meetings. I I think we're voted by the people and I think it's important to those individuals to to hear from that individual. Doesn't matter that they have to be here in attendance. I I know I'd like to hear from every council member either in attendance or virtually, so I support this.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said so far. I was in Minnesota visiting my elderly parents and I just thought to myself that, you know, I have three hours that I could take during that trip to virtually attend the meeting and I felt like I wasn't able to share my thoughts about the things that were on the agenda. And I think counter to what some folks say about being elected and having to be here, I think it almost shows more of a commitment if I'm willing to be somewhere with family and still log in and still do the work and still ask the questions and still be a part of it. So I kinda have a different take on that. So I would support, you know, and I think at this point, we're just talking about the idea of of bringing it up, right? So we're not making any decisions tonight, but I'm sure we'll have more robust discussion in the future. I would vote to to bring this forward.
I really appreciate the input that the mayor and those who've visited the CML conference and and I and I appreciate the personal situations that would warrant participating from home. I don't think that's a question. I think it is an interesting point that we've got that that we're quote behind. I'm I'm okay with that. But I think the the true issue here for me is do we have the authority to do this? And it was my understanding from the last few meetings that we had had that it would require a charter amendment in order for this to happen and be truly in in have no question about our legality or our responsibility to our citizens. In other words, we we put this before the citizens that we serve and that they're, they vote on whether we can do it. I'm not against having virtual meetings. I'm not. I I would benefit from it myself. But I do believe that the that this lies in the charter and that one point that was brought up previously was that when the charter charter was made, it was when when was signed in in nineteen fifty-seven, no, we didn't have the ability for virtual meetings, but we did have the ability for telephone participating at that time. And that was, you know, it was not brought up. They wanted us here in person. So I'm of the belief that I'm not against, I'm not against virtual meetings, but I do believe that we need to do this the right way and it needs to come through a charter amendment through the people. And I think And I think us doing it otherwise gives the impression, I'm not saying we're doing it, but it gives us the impression that we're going to take it and bend it to our will now because we want it right now. This is not something that is, you know, has to happen this month. It can happen with a general or a special election like we had originally planned. And then we can go forward with any regulations that have to be tuned up to, to make it better. But I think putting it in front of the people that hired us to do this job is the way it needs to happen.
What is our legal ramification of passing an ordinance like this, Pat? Would it jeopardize the votes of the virtual attendees or the all votes, all decisions at the meetings that allow virtual attendance?
Well, again, just to clarify, you're, you're not passing the ordinance tonight. You're just instructing staff to bring it forward to either a work session or on first reading at the same meeting. You could do both. The, I mean, the key language is, in the, in the charter, it says that "City councils shall meet at the city hall." And when you're doing statutory or, or ordinance or regulation interpretation, you, you tend to first look at the common uses of words unless there's a more specific explanation. And the common usage of at a location. For example, our courts say you, you get summoned, summons to be in the court, at, at the courthouse. But almost all courts allow virtual participation, both for the judges, the attorneys, and the defendants, even though their summons says you shall appear at the court. You know, I, certainly I would recommend that if, if we do charter amendments, one of those amendments would be to clarify this issue so that this debate doesn't have to occur. But I, I think it's legally supportable to interpret that phrase at the city hall to include virtual appearances.
I would really like to see this ordinance go to a first reading with the increased number of day, uh, meeting participation changed from four to six. I can't think of another thing that we've discussed at this length without going to a vote in my time on council. And I just think it's really time to, to go to a vote.
This has, this has been to a vote.
Well, yeah, but. Well, and then we have a second, we'll have a second reading so we can hear from the public if they have a concern of the process we're doing or. Yeah.
I just want to clarify, I just don't want to, I don't think another workshop is necessary at this time.
If it went forward as an, as on a first reading and a second reading, would we still have to go through the charter to, to put it into the charter as, as a charter amendment?
Well, that would be my recommendation that not for this ordinance to take effect, but in order to be absolutely clear, because there, there will be another attorney and another council in the future. And I mean, I, I think there are other areas of the charter that need clarification that we are currently operating under the current interpretation. But obviously, I think the more doubt that you remove, the better. And, you know, I, I think an ordinance of this type is legally supportable, but rarely are we given black and white, crystal clear laws. And so the, the more we can clarify and the more precise language we can use, the better. So I certainly would say if, if you do pass an ordinance of this type that allows virtual appearance, that we also clarify it in the charter, make that one of the charter amendments that is presented to the people.
So are you essentially saying like we are interpreting the, this part of the charter to include virtual attendance?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not necessarily like amending the charter, it's defining what it says? Yeah.
Clarifying.
Yeah.
It's, it is redefining it differently than it has been defined, the entirety of the interpretation of our charter. The only, the only time we've ever had virtual meetings was under a state emergency during COVID, operating under emergency rules as opposed to.
It seems like at this time, we're kind of going outside of the scope of what tonight's purpose is. And that is, do we have the information we need to move forward? Because I feel like I, we have four people saying they're, they would like to move forward. And then we, we'll have more debates and.
Yeah, yeah, let's, yeah, we'll have time to discuss it more. And I'd like to see the change from four to six meetings. Okay. So we'd like to see this as a.
Okay, that would be the process then, mayor and council, is I will adjust this to allow for six meetings a year. And then, of course, update the ordinance number, et cetera. And then we will present this for first reading at the first September meeting. And I just need a vote on it, please.
And you have a motion in, in front of you. I would suggest if, if whoever's making the motion wants to make the increase from four to six, that you include that in the motion so that what we bring to you on first reading will reflect the preference of the person making the motion. I move that city council resolve to permit future remote appearance of city council members at public meetings and direct staff to prepare the appropriate legal research and legislative documents necessary to prepare the council to fully adopt this measure at future meetings and to increase our virtual attendance from four to six meetings.
Second. Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dehaven.
Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Spruul.
No.
Dobry.
Nay.
Lewis.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Randall.
Nay.
Medina.
Aye. All right, that's four to three, so that passes. All right, we'll move on to eight on our agenda, draft resolution ordinances. We have none tonight, so number nine is city attorney report.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Can I ask a question then? I, I know I asked last meeting, but I guess, could you share with us at the next meeting, like, the plan for the charter update?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, number ten on our agenda, city manager report.
Mayor, in the interest of time tonight, I'd like to forego.
Okay. All right, number eleven on our agenda, city council committee reports. Eleven A is the mayor's report on the workshop. Find my workshop. All right, we had a presentation on tax increment financing and urban renewal authorities. These are tools for revitalization and economic development. So our planning department brought to us the idea of an urban renewal authority, which is a public-private partnership. And it'd be utilizing future taxes to help finance and incentivize development in our community. So I encourage anyone who wants more information on that to watch our workshop. And then B on our agenda was natural medicine draft ordinance discussion and a marijuana ordinance discussion. So we reviewed the drafts for those, and those are both moving forward for first reading at our next meeting. So I encourage folks to pay attention for that. And then there was no general council discussion. So we'll move on to other board reports. We'll start with council member Keefhoffer.
Unfortunately, unable to make the meeting last Thursday.
I was able to attend the library advisory forum where we had a presentation from the Colorado Library Consortium. Their, their representative was in town helping prepare our library for our transfer to the Aspen Cat library system, which will be really exciting when that's up and going. It's the same system that Dolores and Mankas use. They also talked about how important it is to regularly update your policies. We have recently updated the patron code of conduct, and that's been finalized and posted online. We have an exciting author event in, on October twenty-third at five P M. Alana Yazi, the author of the Modern Navajo Kitchen Cookbook, is going to be at the Cortez Library. And then the movies in the park, the Minecraft movie will be playing September fifth, and Lilo and Stitch, October third.
The golf course advisory committee met on August twenty-second. We were updated on attendance at tournaments. Pinto Bean had two hundred and twenty-four participants. The ladies teacup had seventy-four. They had a high school tournament that had eighty-five players last week. We have our revenue currently at five hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. Last year, it was at four hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven. The golf pro is projecting about six hundred, six hundred thousand to six hundred and thirty thousand projected end of year revenue. And then we were provided some proposed project priorities for twenty-twenty-six from Parks and Rec Director Creighton Wright. And he provided us with a sheet that, that the committee approved.
Okay, we'll move on on our agenda to twelve other items of business. Twelve A is an executive session concerning personal matters. Just a quarterly appointed official performance update from city manager Drew Sanders. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, just to briefly inform the council, if you'll recall, during the performance evaluations for both Mr. Sanders and myself, council had asked that we meet with you quarterly to update council on items that we're working on or problems we're having or good things that are happening and, and just kind of have a, a time to share and discuss so that it's not just an annual performance review. And this would be the first quarterly report with Mr. Sanders. And it's anticipated that you will have a similar session with me at the next meeting. And with that, I believe it's time for a motion.
Thanks, Matt.
Before we do that, I'd like to have a mayor question. Because I'm assuming this is going to take a while. Maybe somebody in the crowd that has something they would like to discuss. And I don't think they need to wait on us for an hour before they do it.
Yeah.
Appropriate?
I think it's appropriate, yeah. Thank you, Dennis. Okay, so we'll, we'll skip ahead to thirteen, public participation, no limit to the number of speakers and no overall time limit. Speakers themselves have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not see time to another commenter. So do we have someone from the public? Start with your name and the community you live in. Make sure, there's a button on there to make sure that the front.
Hello, okay.
Perfect, great.
Sorry about that, guys. My name's Christopher Mantemba. I've lived in this community pretty much my whole life. I mean, I've gone to school here, graduated here, I've seen it all. My question for you, Mr. Lewis, you said that the Parks and Recs had passed some sort of paperwork. I was just wondering what, what the paperwork was about.
Oh, unfortunately, this is just for you to provide comment to us, it's not a back and forth.
Okay.
But we, but we do have Creighton Wright, our Parks and Rec director, here if you want to speak with him after.
Okay, that's fine. I just have a comment to where you guys essentially voted to have, what would you call, virtual meetings, right? I'm from the class of twenty-twenty, from COVID. I graduated that year from Cortez year. And from my own experience of what virtual classes did to us and all these virtual meetings, number one, for me, it showed me that many people who show up do not care. They're somewhere else, they're on vacation, they're, you know. I feel like this building, this room that we're in right now serves a, a purpose, you know? Like, we're supposed to meet here, this is what these seats are here for, this, all of this. Having a virtual meeting would essentially give this room no purpose and no direction at all. And it may start with like six to eight weeks now, but what's to stop it from going on to fifty-two weeks in the future? You know, this is kind of how my education went. You know, it started off with, don't show up to school for three weeks. We'll start showing online school. And then from after that, it went to just, oh, you're not going to show up for graduation. You're going to show up for a drive-through graduation. And then from there on, your college education will also be online, over the phone, through the computer, whatever, how obviously you want to see it. And it doesn't really bring, how do you say, that human connection to it, you know? Having a virtual meetings, I understand you guys are visiting your family, you're going places, I get it. You guys are people too, you have lives. But at the same time, like, you guys are also serving a duty to your community to show up to this building at a specific time, on a specific date, to essentially do your job. To have you guys do that virtually seems kind of unfair to the public, especially for us to not be able to, you know, essentially vote on it if, if this is going to move forward. We just had a four-on-three motion to move this forward, but I didn't hear anybody else's opinion on how they felt about this. But yeah, that's pretty much all I got to say, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? All right, we'll close that section and then we'll, do we have a motion for an executive session?
I move that council go into executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F. And not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter be an open session. Any members of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees. Specifically, the purpose of the executive session will be to conduct a quarterly appointed official performance update with Drew Sanders, the Cortez city manager. Mr. Sanders has not requested this executive session occur in an open meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Dobry and seconded by Lewis.
Randall.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Aye.
Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Dobry.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Welcome out from high school?
Yeah.
How's it?
Thanks. Yeah, no, we were in this room right here. I used to be the city chairman and then from then the vice chairman. And politics, I'm actually very passionate about. And since I graduated in twenty-twenty, I left for five years. And I came back and now this town, I was thinking something down. And I left, it felt like it was on the upturn of the city council. What are we gonna do? And I get COVID, gotten away with a lot of things. I completely understand that, but since then, it doesn't feel like anything really happened. All the things we don't need.
Well, probably as a advisor, we just wanted to figure. So, all we're gonna have to question is to get a line. And we don't, jobs. They wouldn't summarize. So, actually, we're going to go over the areas. If it actually is like that. And we're having all this. It's like, no, we're gonna buy a, how?
I mean, that's one of my very few concerns. I mean, I shoot the list from the bottom to the top. You know, certain properties, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, you know? My family's been here since like the fifties. Yeah, I feel like now it's only like, now's my time to kind of try to do my part.
Well, so you asked a question about the sheet that was presented at the golf.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was a list of things. We've gone through the last six months or so and assessed all of our parks and our golf courses and all of the public facilities. And so we presented to the golf advisor committee a list of different projects at the golf course.
Okay.
And we separated off the priorities versus those that we could intend to build on special priority.
Yeah.
And asked them to basically buy in on the projects that we're gonna submit for, for this thing.
But this is at the golf course?
Yes.
On the way to Dolores?
Yes, right, right.
Are they, are they private though?
No, they're city owned, city run.
Okay. So, for what the Parks and Recs, the paperwork that they submit was for the park or the golf course?
For the golf course in particular, yes.
They just seem kind of misleading because they decided, oh, we have parks and they put some paperwork in and then they ended it. It's like, wait, speaking, what? You know what I mean?
Yeah, we thought the same thing.
I just, yeah, I just want to know what the city is actually doing. It seems like a lot of it's kind of glossed behind language. Or, you know, maybe I'm like the same type, but, you know, I'm not that old. Maybe I don't know all the language that there is to know or have, and like, I can't concur into this fast like you guys do. But to me, it definitely seems like there's like a lot of lost translation, at least from like sitting here on council to the lay-in. You know what I mean? That's kind of where I used to be, like doing, from the chairman having a speaker up, he'd be like, what? I'm like, okay, I understand the confusion.
Do we have specific areas of interest? Because I think probably your best option is to connect with the staff members here that are responsible for it.
Oh, I plan to connect there. I want to be here. I love city council. I want to be a part of this one day, you know? I was the chairman, I could see myself being the mayor one day, something like this. This has been home for me forever.
Yeah.
But I do want to connect this to everybody. One of my main concerns now, do you ever, I remember the park on the south side where the old high school used to be, were you around?
I was not.
Okay.
But I have taken the responsibility of being on this.
Okay, do you know what really happened there? Because last to my knowledge, it was what, maybe, yeah, it was twenty-twenty, late twenty-twenty.
Yeah.
And when they said they were essentially canceled, because we had like sixteen and a half million dollars, like budgeted out for it. Because we were gonna do, we were gonna do a hundred foot by ten foot skate wall. For part, it was part of the skateboard, so people had like a new skate park and also placed a graffiti where they had the city could come up and clean it up every once in a while.
Right.
And wipe it off and then re-graffit it so they didn't have to go to the businesses and whatnot. And you know, there's like the water feature and all this other stuff. I just had, I never kind of really figured out what happened with that.
So that money was never budgeted. That might have been the proposed cost of the project building?
Possibly.
But it was never budgeted.
Yeah.
And that was, so that was, I've been here three and a half years. When I got here, that was my very first project.
Yeah, and it was answered for communities that figured it out. Okay.
And ultimately, when the last cost estimate estimate I did had it at seven and a half to eight million dollars, so we're not very much to go with it out. And as we talked about, the city manager and ultimately our city council figured that wasn't something that we could afford right then or even today. So there was, you probably remember as that project went through, it was seconded into a greater piece of housing and a part from the majority of the property. It was a fourteen acre total site, ten acres was outside for the park. So we, what, we announced it was a ton of our housing.
Yeah, the east end or something.
So we are going through this process right now, where we're changing that, the percentage of land that's dedicated to housing versus park. So we're gonna put seven acres into housing and seven acres into the park.
Okay.
And I am in the process of trying to figure out how to pay to develop that side acre for the park.
Yeah, what is the point? So is it like low income housing? Is it like home appliances or is it supposed to be like houses, single family homes?
So we've not totally decided on it yet, but the proposal that, the question proposal we put out to developers, we said we want a mix of both market rate, so that's like a not low income and low income housing. And so we're in the process of working with the developer right now, proposing this off-lead. It should be, it'll likely be coming to council here in the next couple of months. We're just starting the negotiating process to try to figure out exactly what the project is.
Why do they want to do like a value of, I was like, does only want to get more people into, at least from what I was in. Like, when I was in, we had blueprints of the park.
Yeah.
Set up, we came into the meeting, I was speaking right here, we had it up on the TV.
Yeah, we still, we still have that.
Why they want to do like simple family homes instead of, I don't know, like the south side. Really, we need more apartments would be better to bring more population and more people to around the park.
It is, it's gonna be an entirely apartment project, it's all the rental housing. The question is going to be whether or not it's going to be income limited or not.
How many income limited neighbors are there? Because there's, I know there's the Baker, the Ruve Field class. At the end of Empire, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know exactly what it's, the flavors we could do is Rachel, I mean, not relevant, she's in the middle of the conversation. I don't know the answer to that, but we have the biggest question. And that property itself, I want to say the ratio is about sixty to forty, next sixty percent income on four acres. And this year, that was.
I'm not like, no disrespect to you, what you're doing as a job, you know, it's like a completely expected. It just seems like what we added, like, they, because when, when it was, when it was originally brought up, this was like a year, maybe two years after the old high school was torn down. And they gave it to us to like figure out what we're gonna do with it. And we had a plan, we had a plan where we're gonna do like ten acres of the park and then the four acres of the housing. And the housing was supposed to be like, I don't know, it's supposed to be like income limited, it was supposed to be like, you know, for people, you know, a little more affordable, people trying to buy a home. I guess it's not, it's not, it's not, um, and it just seems like every time I check in, just because I'm curious, it always seems like the process has come harder and harder for, at least to me, it seemed like apparent no reason for, like, no apparent reason. It's just, I don't know, I just, I, I just feel like I'm missing a lot of pages to a book to kind of like put the four pieces together.
Well, and I'll tell you, just, the three years I've been here and working on this, I think it's, it is complicated, there's no question. Because we're, we're taking an assumption of originally, clearly, the process of change is that. And we'll eventually need the council to buy in. And then we're going to have to amend the heartland based on what you, you know, from earlier, the proposal we've been through, do we have to amend it to something different? I mean, it is, it's complicated, because we're going through a change process.
They just made a park, an entire park. I mean, the whole south side could use a park, that would help with the crime, with all the shooting, for drugs. I mean, the south side is literally like the dumb town. The only reason the north side is so nice is because of Rexon Park Street, you know, like, there's people here all the time.
Yeah, we're trying to accomplish two challenges in the community at the same time. Housings are, are another big issue, right? There's not enough housing in this community for the amount of people that are here. And we have, we have some, the city has a commission. We have more, this little community, city board, which I'm.
No shit.
No, for real.
How many?
It's like two hundred and twenty-six or something like that. Boulder tracks, uh, possibly share them just a little.
Okay, and we have how many?
Two hundred, two hundred and twenty-six is on for.
Homeless tracks.
Same project tracks, people.
Two hundred and twenty-six thousand people?
No, two hundred and six.
Oh, it's just two hundred and twenty-six, okay. And in Boulder, it's on?
Hundred, roughly a hundred and five.
Oh, oh, so we're talking three districts? I thought you were talking.
Yeah, but you need to have our population though. We're at ten thousand population versus Boulder's of a hundred and some odd thousand.
Absolutely, I don't think it's, I don't think it's an income problem. Because a lot of the people that I went to school with, a lot of them after COVID, they come in drugs and now they're like, I see them, I see them, can't handle it on the streets, people now score.
For sure, there's a mix, for sure. I wouldn't say that it's necessarily an income problem. There is some group of that population that chooses to live on the street.
Sure.
And there's others that have, I don't know. You have a whole list of issues, for sure.
Okay, it is still August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the time is nine fourteen P M. The executive session has concluded and council has reconvened into open session. Those persons participating in the executive session were myself, Mayor Rachel Medina, Mayor Pro Tem Dennis Spruill, and council members Matthew Kiefhafer, Lydia DeHaven, Bill Lewis, April Randall, and Robert Dobree. Also participating was City Manager Drew Sanders and City Attorney Patrick Coleman. No adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, regulation, or formal action or rule or formal action occurred during the executive session. If any council member or a member of the public believes that the subject matter of the executive session was not statutory authorized or that the discussions that occur in executive sessions just strayed from the announced subject matter, please speak up now. All right, seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item.
Before we have adjourned, I just wondered if it would be possible, we're always doing public participation at the very end, and that's after we've already had our executive session. If we could put the public participation like we did tonight in front of the executive session, that way they don't have to sit here and wait for an hour while we're, if that's a possibility.
That is a possibility. What we would have to do is just change our resolution on the order of business. So we've done that before, we've got it, we can bring that for you and get that, it's really a one-night council function.
That's just my opinion, I want to make sure the other council members agree.
I think that definitely makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yep, I agree. All right, thank you for the great idea, Dennis. All right, do we then have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree.
DeHaven?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Randall? Spruill?
Yes.
Kiefhafer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Aye.
Medina?
Aye. All right, good night.